It's now ten o'clock, ladies and gentlemen, let's call the meeting to order. Would you please turn your phones on, Salix, please, for the meeting's purposes? We have the minutes of April fifteenth. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as mail?
Move on the minutes, I'll check it.
Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have the claims.
Move it. Second.
Is there a second? Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Human Resources, we have the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. I'll pass that around for seat insurance, there's a second.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item four is the approval of resolutions to adopt and levy special assessments on the Little Sioux Drainage.
I'd move it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Then we have the levy special assessments in the McCambliss, Inter County Drainage District, Monona County, Woodbury County.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the last item is the approval of the resolution adopting the levy special assessment for Sandrill Lake Port, Inter County Drainage District, Monona County, and Woodbury County, Iowa.
Move it.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we have the planning and zoning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've got two agenda items, the first one is a request we've received from the engineering firm representing the Willow Dairy. If you recall several years ago, Woodbury County was involved in a matrix assessment of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources to allow a dairy to be built at this location, which is about five hundred feet south of the intersection of Eastland Avenue and two hundred, I think it's two hundred and eightieth. They wish to expand, and to do so, they want to build a fifty by four hundred dairy heifer barn and some calf huts next to the south of it. And to do so and make it fit right, they wish to place it within up to seventy feet from a public thoroughfare, which is restricted not by our zoning ordinances because they're ag exempt, but due to the matrix assessment. And the only way the DNR will let it be placed at that location is if the Woodbury County Supervisors execute a waiver to allow that thirty-foot difference between a hundred and seventy feet. The Woodbury County Engineers have reviewed the issue and has no negative comments. And as this is not technically a waiver that would go before your Board of Adjustment for approval, it's simply a concession made by your Board to allow it to happen. Our staff recommendation is in large part dependent upon the engineers' comments that it doesn't create any safety or thoroughfare issue, and we would recommend you approve your chairman executing the labor.
The DNRs on top of all this?
Yes, we've spoken with Paul Patiti, who's their head engineer. These aren't real comment, but they've been done before, and if we don't sign this, it won't happen at this location. They would have to redesign the entire expansion project. Both Mark and I have had discussions with Nick Rowe, who's the engineer representing the project, asking, well, why can't we turn this, resize it, make it a smaller number of units, heifers? And there were numerous reasons, everything from erosion to safety to maintenance issues that he raised. We think conceding thirty feet is reasonable.
I don't have a problem with this, but it's an ag building.
It's ag exempt, and that's why it's not a variance request. This is outside of that process.
Why does he have to come to us to begin with, it's ag exempt?
There's a state code section for something that requires, if it wants to be placed here, the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors have to sign off.
Who found that?
I ran a copy this morning.
Yeah, four five nine point two oh two.
Yeah, it's right there in the code, we looked it up, and it is there, it's very specific.
No less than a hundred.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, we'll present a number of copies to the chairman for signature. My second agenda item is tied to the master permit, building permit process that has been negotiated with CF Industries. That document has been bannered back and forth between CF and my office and changed as late as, late last week. So late in fact that the Woodbury County Attorney's Office has requested additional time to review the last provision and make comment. We would then, I think, be ethically responsible to send back changes, if any, to CF Industries for their review. We believe that process can be accomplished within a two-week period, so we're asking for a postponement of this agenda item to a minimum of two weeks.
Move postpone for two weeks.
Second.
Can the county attorney's office get this done this week?
We're going to try to do that, but I report three days this week, so to be safe, I'll have a repeat Friday and week, but for them to get back plus, I think the two weeks is probably realistic.
Well, two weeks is fine, as long as...
If we get it done a week.
If you need it for a week, and they need it for a week, now we're three weeks out.
Well, I don't think it'll take them as long as we think, because I think Nick has, Nick DeRoz has been forward to execute this agreement, and it will be a local.
Okay.
And it's high business priority, so we would hope they respond.
All right, so it'll be good.
Thanks, John.
There is a motion, yeah, we have to vote on it. Those in favor of the motion to postpone it for two weeks indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, item number six, the county engineer.
We have several permits today to work in the right-of-way. First one is consider approval of Berry Utilities Accommodation for the Leroy Hansen West in Lakeport Township, they're looking at running electric line board across our road. The condition I'm placing upon this is that they sign at both ends of the lines, so that since they aren't participating in Iowa one call, we have an idea where their line crosses the road.
Move it.
Second.
They're going across the road with this?
Yes, the utility lines on the east side of the road, the well and pivot for the irrigation unit is on the west side.
They're going to tunnel across the roadway?
They're boring, yes.
It says tunnel on here.
Pardon me?
It says tunnel on here.
Well, they're tunneling with about a three-inch conduit, so.
All right, so it's going to be jacked and bored?
Yes, jacked and bored. I can make that change for them. The trustee, I think, is unaware of the proper term.
Okay, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, item B.
Our next item is a permit to work within the right-of-way for the Lawton Bronson Little League, they're planning a street dance as a fundraiser for the league, have requested to close a foreign-to-market extension through Lawton for an evening to allow that to happen. The county provides barricades, they set them up, take them down.
Move it.
Second. Discussion, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
We have a Berry Utility Permit for Western Iowa Telephone along Jasper Avenue. It's basically exposing an existing fiber and copper line and bringing it farther north.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
And another one in Floyd Township for Western Iowa Telephone. This one is bringing service into a residence at sixteen twenty-one Emmett Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
And finally, in Concord Township, Western Iowa Telephone is bringing a line from an existing post alongside of Correctionville Road and taking that line to a tower site, cell tower site.
Move it.
Second. Okay, discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Would the board like a quick report now on the outcome of our survey to the Orton Slough, or do you want me to wait for public comments?
Yeah, let's do it now.
It's just an information item, so I didn't schedule it as a regular board issue. We sent out a total of thirty-three letters. We got nineteen no response, including one that was returned to sender, apparently the tax address was no longer valid. We received, of those twenty respond, or twenty no responses, including the one that came back to us, that represented eight hundred and seventy-seven acres roughly of the twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty acres that are out there. We received ten yes responses, that they wanted us to continue with the project, that represented just shy of eleven hundred acres, just shy of fifty percent of the total drainage district. We received four negative responses, which represented two hundred and fifty-one, two hundred and fifty-two acres. So if you look at, we didn't get fifty percent of the landowners, we got almost fifty percent of the land in the affirmative. Of the no responses, that included the railroad, CF Industries, a number of very small parcels, two, three, five acre parcels that are out there, which I assume are residential acreages that aren't taxed very heavily, even if they are involved with it. I do, I didn't prepare a summary of who said what, but I do have the information along if you have any particular questions with it. But, let's see, A&amp;A Cattle Company was one that didn't respond, Aylers didn't respond, CHO LLP didn't respond, the Hall Family Partnership didn't respond, Jorgensen's Properties, Kermit Lee Land Farms, those are some of the larger landowners. Mogenson did not respond. Union Pacific Railroad did not respond, but their total was probably under twenty acres, and it would be all the different railroad parcels that run through the district. They're like the highway department, where they're required to participate in any portion of the project, regardless of whether they're for it or not, we're basically along for Pattersons, my guess, did respond and were opposed. Some of the grounds, there's two point four six acres owned by the United States of America.
Is that us?
I would guess that that might be the airport beacon.
Oh, okay.
That would probably be about a two-acre parcel sitting out there in the middle of nowhere, so. You know, again, their benefit is minimal, and I don't think we can tax the United States government on this one.
But the number of people that responded in a positive sense was, what, a little less than fifty percent?
Ten. So we're roughly a third of the potential respondents, but that was two and a half times the negative response. So if you look at it, twenty-nine percent of the landowners, representing about forty-nine percent of the land, responded affirmatively. They represented seventy-one percent of the responses received.
Interesting.
Four, representing about twelve percent of the owners, responded negatively, they represented eleven percent of the land. I mean, the preponderance is affirmative, but, well, I guess, you know, even when you look at acreage represented, there were more for it that represented more acreage than those who didn't even bother to send it back. We had, we were getting two or three in the mail up till Monday, we had nothing in the mail yesterday.
Okay, so you've probably seen the end of it as far as responses, yeah. Okay.
What are the next step? What's the next step after this? I mean, to me, this is still not a real clear...
Well, I think what you do is give this to us in a formal sense, as far as, you know, the results of the survey and so on and so forth, and maybe we can get it on the agenda for discussion within the next week or two weeks and determine basically what, where we should go with it. I know that, you know, there's a lot of people down there, particularly in the Browns Lake area, that are not in favor of it, you know, they're not directly, they're indirectly affected, and I think that they need to be considered too, and that discussion has to be held on that, so.
I'd like to see where that, the affirmative land is.
Oh, yeah, I could have Kyle create a map that showed that.
If it's on the top end, we could do half of it and drain it into that wooded slough between seventy-five and twenty-nine.
Well, anyway...
Those are the people that have talked to me the most.
Well, that's why I think that you need to put it together for us in a way that we can look at the maps and landowners.
That's why I wanted to do it informally today to find out how you wanted it.
Yeah, so I think with the preliminary information that you gave us today, we can't make a decision on anything, but I think that, you know, based on what you've said, the information that you have, you could put together enough information for us to really make a legitimate decision, maybe in the next week or two weeks, of where to go.
Is Mark, what you said, is that the land that was going, the twenty acres to sell?
I'm not sure, that's different, isn't it?
Yes, that's different. What Mark's talking about is between Highway, Old Highway seventy-five and County Road D-51, there's two wetland areas.
It would be the west side of the railroad tunnel underneath.
That's, that's where that's...
Okay, that's...
That's that twenty acres.
That'd be Briaud's.
Briaud's ground, yes. And he did not respond.
Now, did he offer to sell that property?
He has, he has been willing to sell that property, and he stated that at our first informal meeting. He also stated it to our consultant when we turned in the WERB grant. We were unsuccessful on the WERB grant.
And if that was the route we ended up going, who would own that property?
It would be probably owned by Woodbury County Supervisors as trustees for the Drainage District.
Unless we can get the NRCS to get involved.
NRCS is already involved on it, because it's in the wetland conservation program. So we would need to buy out...
Briaud.
Briaud. For his, he's got a twenty-year contract on him, so.
I don't know, I would have to talk to him.
We have to buy out the balance of his contract and basically paying NRCS back for it, it will go into permanent wetland.
You just said we didn't get the WERB grant either? Okay. Well, what I'd like to see happen, though, is you put together that information for us all, Mark, and then rather than have it on the agenda, I think that we probably need to have a public meeting down there.
That's what you had talked about, was a second informal.
Yeah, second, yeah, right, down there to let all of the landowners and also the concerned people that would be indirectly affected to see what we've gathered and the information and make a decision then. I mean, I, that's the way, I guess I would do it, if the board wants to do it, because I don't think we could get all those people in this room, and I think that there's going to be a lot of interest in that, in this project.
Now, the question I'll put out there, and I guess I'm looking at Joshua a little bit with this one, is landowners are the ones who have the ultimate say in whether a drainage district goes through. If the board chooses not to do a drainage district improvement based on public commentary with what's going on down at Browns Lake, does the board put themselves in a position where their, their job is acting as trustees? So I think some analysis needs to be done on what their role is based on the will of the folks that are in the drainage district.
Well, but would that...
Does my question make sense, Joshua?
I understand your question, but...
Whether there's potential liability there, or...
Yes, and whether their role as trustee outweighs their overall oversight role as county supervisors looking out at the welfare of the county, puts them in a tough position in the middle.
Extra fiduciary duty or something?
Yes.
We can look into that. Off the top of my head, I would say that there's still a legislative function there as far as weighing all the information that's available and determining what the appropriate action is, but I don't think that there would be liability.
The other thing, we still don't have fifty percent of the...
Right.
...landowners that want it.
No, but what it takes to stop it is fifty percent of the landowners representing seventy percent of the ground. I mean, some people have not gotten off center yet to give you any guidance once a final project is there, that's what it takes to stop it.
Of course, we have, there's not a project there yet.
There isn't a project there, no. The next steps would be, if you want to hold a second informal hearing, we do that, following that step would be the submittal of the drainage engineer's report to you, and then upon the submittal of the report with a recommendation on a project, you would schedule a public hearing to proceed with the project, that's your next three steps.
Isn't it possible we could also maybe reject any of those proposals or do a partial one, I'm going back to what Mark said, depending on where those landowners that want it, where their land sits, there seem to be some partial steps that could be taken that might satisfy both groups, if you will?
Well, that would be another option that you could give the drainage engineer direction to study.
Well, and that brings me to that point, the engineer that we're paying money out to? Why are we still paying money out to him if we don't have any plans to go forward yet?
That was billing for past work.
Okay, but we're not billing, we're not getting any new?
Our last bill was sixty-two hundred, was it in this week or the week before?
Okay, well...
That's the latest, that's the last bill I have seen.
The biggest concern from those people down there is they're paying money for something that may or may not happen, and they're not happy.
Well, you know, it was either us, or we would be doing this for them for free.
Right.
The engineer's office, and, you know, the complexity of this project was one, along with our timeframe on other projects, we were unable to take it on.
Okay.
I mean, there is, we didn't initiate this process, and it does take time to do the work. This company had the lowest hourly rates for engineers, right, engineers and technicians right down the board, so.
But...
Whoever we hired would have had...
But we did initiate this program. We did initiate this.
Yes.
On the basis, on the basis that somebody wanted it, and then all of a sudden, nobody wanted it, what was going on, we'll talk about that later, but what I'm saying is, I don't want to be paying for the engineer anymore right now.
Okay, well, then that needs to be taken into account if we want to attend an informal hearing, because there is hourly expenses and travel expenses. And if we do, we'll schedule that meeting, I mean, they've provided us enough information where it could be done without them, if you choose to make that decision.
Okay.
That is a worry, and that's something that we talked to them about, and Jackie was there when I asked the question, before we keep going with expenses for you folks, do you want this job to keep going? And we got nothing, so...
We really did receive very little feedback on that first informal meeting.
And we still had twenty-two folks who were landowners there. I'd have to go back and count to see how many farms they actually represented, because we do have the signup sheet for that.
Well, let's do this, I mean, I think that we've got a lot more information now, and I think we have a little more that we can present to the public as a whole, and they can help us make that decision when we, when we present it. But I would really like to have that meeting out there so that they know what that information is, and they can bring their concerns to this trustee's board.
I think you're right, but I think this board has to make an assumption there, that we're going to proceed with the project. If we're not going to proceed with the project, there's no sense in doing any of that, in my opinion.
But I still think we can go out there and listen to them, and then we can make that, we'll make that call.
But, you know, I think they should, Larry, I think they should know what we have at this point in time, because we did say, let's wait, let's get some additional information, we have that now, and we can go from there.
Get us the information.
I do.
The only piece of information we haven't discussed this morning was Mid-American and Horseshoe Lake is not a potential outlet, so. Mid-American, I forwarded that email to you from their staff member, who's their public liaison right-of-way person, that they are not interested in taking more water.
And who else, Mid-American, who else, and Horseshoe Lake?
It's Horseshoe Lake.
Horseshoe Lake is owned by Mid-American.
Oh, okay.
That was the outlet that had been identified by Mr. Patterson.
And they're not interested in taking additional water?
No.
So, okay.
They, their environmental and, I forget what they called it, but their environmental staff said no, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Item seven, when can you get back to us with that information, though, Mark, so that we can set up something?
I should be able to get Kyle on doing a math this week.
Okay.
Do you want that just as an information item for the next meeting?
I think so, and with the other information that you presented here, and then we can set a time when we need to have a public meeting down here. That would be, that'd work out good, okay? Item number seven is discussion of approval of the public hearing for the 2015 budget amendment. Dennis?
That will be held May twentieth at ten thirty is the proposed time and date. I have all the requests coming by Wednesday noon tomorrow, so I put it together. I'll be absent for a while, so we will set the date today if you can, and then I'll have the information to you probably before I leave.
Okay. What was the date?
May twentieth?
Twenty, ten thirty.
I would like that, so the public hearing, May twentieth at ten thirty.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last item, hearing of any individual or wanting to make a presentation on an item not on the agenda.
Over the several years I've been here, the human resources department has brought up different times that we should have some sort of employee recognition when the employees do something good for the county.
We've done that on occasion, Pat.
But there was always talk about starting a program, and I think this would be a good time to do with the change of leadership, because I just want to bring to your attention an example of what occurred, the IT department, the WIC, they started on a program to rework the county phone system, trying to save some money.
Right.
And working with our office, with Gene and our office, and a couple of employees, Chandler Chase and Andy Peets, Pitts, I think the name is, but anyway, they did a great job, and they went beyond, you know, what they're normally do, is that they, part of this, to find out, you know, over the years, you get these landlines out there, and nobody really knows where they're at, we had a turnover in the IT department, and the person who was managing that, but, so these folks took it upon themselves to dial all these numbers to find where they went to, but in the end, it's going to save the county about four thousand dollars a year by eliminating these lives that we were paying for that weren't out there, so just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So how long did it take them to do that? There was over four thousand lines, Pat?
No, it was nowhere near that, but there were a lot of lines out there that couldn't be identified.
Oh.
Called them until somebody answered. Called them until somebody answered, and just trying to find out where they were at and what they, you know, trying to eliminate things without irritating people. But, I mean, they really went beyond what was expected of them.
We'll have to recognize them for that.
If you can reduce that to writing and give it to the chairman, we can get that taken care of.
Yes. John Hoy do it too or something?
No.
That's great, okay.
I was in receipt of a letter from the chairman, and I'll give you guys a copy, so yeah, maybe you.
I think I have it, but that's fine.
Regarding court security, I was out of town last week when I got it, so by the time I got back.
One more. I gave mine to George.
And I wrote my response, but the, I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at it. The last sentence is the concerning part. This, there is concern amongst the board that there's not a need for a full-time position and that there are other alternatives to be considered. And I guess my, we've spent about a year on this committee, and we've gone over how to proceed with it. And so I was a little bit surprised, because I thought last week when we had left the meeting, that's the way we were going to go. So I wrote a response, basically that, you know, we're not able to, we're not able to work the program unless we have what's already been budgeted for, and that was to create that new position, because we have to backfill. We just don't have the luxury of pulling a rabbit out of our hat. So all our people have a number of duties and collateral duties on top of it. So we wouldn't have, we don't have a body to spare. And part of a contract that had been entered into years ago was if we have a deputy supervising a number of people, he's going to get paid the acting sergeant wages. So it's just simply, that's how the contract language is written. And that's why we request that to be a sergeant to obey the contract language. And then, of course, you have to backfill that position, because you would be taken from somewhere out in the county. So I'm just here to find out what you think would be the better alternatives, if you've had a chance to look at it.
Well, we're looking for an alternative from you, Sheriff. I know that there was concern, you know, even on our committee meeting, I brought it up earlier about, you know, the full-time sheriff's position for that, for the security of the courthouse. That's going to cost a little bit more money. And, you know, I guess my concern is, is a full-time person necessary at that particular level to supervise two or three people, you know, during the week? And with a pool of maybe five or six others that could fill in if there's sickness, vacations, and that kind of thing? You know, the, we're going to have, those folks are going to have to be here from, I would say, seven to four-thirty, maybe five o'clock at the latest, five days a week. And it doesn't seem to me that it would take a full-time person to supervise two or three people like that for the duration of the program.
Well, it's going to be more than that. I mean, you may have three working, four working at a time, but he's going to be responsible for getting the staffing going, all the people that are lined up. It's more than just showing up and making a schedule one day and hope every, it does need that type of supervision. And if you're using those reserves by code, you still have to have a deputy, a sworn peace officer to oversee them. So that's why we're where we're at. I can't have the reserves, according to the code, be unsupervised. So that's why they have to have that.
Now, do reserves have to be used? See, that's another area that I'm concerned.
It's a term. Under the code, I mean, you can call them whatever, but according to the code, they need to be called reserve deputies.
Are they the same volunteers and reserves that we're talking about that we approved?
They all fall under the same.
All fall in the same category. So if we pay those individuals, they're paid volunteers' reserves?
Well, that's a word that you, they're just paid as reserves.
I think what the sheriff is looking for is he's going to hire probably retired officers.
Retired law enforcement and only way they're.
They're not like the reserve deputies that we.
They're not like the reserve volunteers.
They're going to get paid a different wage, because they're sworn.
But they're.
Well, aren't the volunteer reserves sworn also?
Sworn reserve officers. And what happens is, retired peace officers certification only lasts a year. So what happens is they have to go through the reserve program, not as extensive, because they're already peace officers. They have to take a few modules to keep that going. And that's what they fall under. It's all that language that we've researched and gone over. And that's what it fits under, and that's where we're at. And those fees, what has been budgeted, we plan on staying obviously within that. That's, but I need to have that position to supervise staff, because basically it would be no different than someone running the jail shift. Actually, he's probably got about the same amount, or a patrol shift. Though they be part-time, he still has a number of responsibilities along with that from day to day. So I don't, you know, if you have other alternatives and other ways of going, that it would have to be, obviously, that you wouldn't include us. Because we cannot, we cannot do it without having those bodies. And that's totally up to you, as a board, to decide that. But I would need to know so we can get moving forward, because to hire and to get those retired law enforcement people or, you know, up in certification, by July one, we're clocks running.
I realize that. I realize that. Well, I just, I think, you know, I need a little more time as far as I'm concerned. And I know that there's concern from board members about, you know, that, because we don't want to see, I guess I'm also concerned about, you know, the price of the program escalating over time. And with a full-time person, that position is what, about seventy thousand dollars?
Oh, you just gave, I mean, I think it's sixty-three for a sergeant, possibly, plus benefits.
Sixty-three, and that's with benefits, or is that with everything?
No, that's with benefits.
But you're going to be paying that regardless. If you have this office run, the courthouse security group running, you'd apply contract to pay that person wherever it runs at, because it's in a contract. Your concern is the backfill for that sergeant, is my understanding, right? You're going to hire.
Yeah, that's part of it, Todd.
You're right, it's roughly seventy, eighty thousand to fully train and equip a person.
But that falls all within that two-hundred-and-fifty.
It's back to the budget we gave us.
I think Dennis had the numbers and.
And that's without cameras and.
Right, we weren't doing cameras till we got to the point where.
One of the reasons we gave up the cameras.
So what you're saying, in that budget, you can make it work?
Oh.
Okay.
But for us to proceed, you know, we're going to have to have you guys decide one way or the other, or you can use that other option that you wish to go by.
Well, let us mull this over another week, if you will. And I will be getting back to you, Sheriff, on this. I will definitely do that.
Okay.
Because we're definitely going to have courthouse security, I mean, that's.
Right, I mean, that's how you go about it, it's totally up to you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other items from the board members?
I got nothing.
Anything done, entertaining motion to adjourn?
Motion.